Start with the roll call.
Councilman Daley.
Here.
Councilman Leonard.
Here.
Councilman Popescu.
Here.
Mayor Protemperi Duper.
Present.
And Mayor Rixby.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. The invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led this evening by Councilman Leonard. Please stand as far as you're able.
All right. Father and Governor, we thank you for your love for us and your continued watch care over us, your presence in our lives and pray that we adhere with us tonight in the City Council that we come to the proper decisions for our community.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additional or deletional items?
No, sir.
Would the public like to speak on any items not agendized? I have no requests, written requests, and I see no takers, so we'll go to item F. There will be a conflict of interest, which is outlined in item number three. But first, we do the consent calendar.
I'll move the calendar.
One second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, that's unanimous approval. It requires me and Councilman Popescu to depart, and I will hand the proceedings over to the Mayor Protem.
All right, this is a second reading for a zone change from single-family residential to institutional. As you recall, this is related to the parking structure in the FMO parking lot and those two parcels to the west of the property that are being incorporated into the FMO.
My only question was, so we know one of those houses has already been taken down. Does this also include the rental? Is that what this two addresses are?
Both of the university-owned properties have been taken down or in the process of being taken down.
Including that rental that they had there too?
Yes. No, 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 that doesn't, that one is not, because the university bought that after all this began, so the two...
So it's the two next to that one?
Right next to it, and then there's the one at the pool that apparently has not been taken down and may not be. I don't see that, they didn't tell me if that was in their plans or not.
Okay, so this one doesn't include that one?
Correct.
I really don't have very much in the way of any questions or anything. I'll defer to my colleagues.
No questions here. Then I'll move the item. And you can move it by waiving the reading of the council bill in its entirety, direct the clerk to read by title only, and adopt to propose ordinance on a roll call vote. How do you want to do it? He got it?
Yes, this is the second reading of an ordinance.
I read the actual recommendation this time. They're getting smart. They're putting it in there verbatim for us.
I left my agenda at the office.
The motion is there, just read it.
I'm fine, there's hardly anything there. Didn't you just move it then?
No, I can't.
Oh, all right.
So it is entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, Amending the Official Zoning Map of the City of Loma Linda From Single Family Residence R1 to Institutional For Parcels Located at 24794, which is APN 0284-28201, and 24795 Daisy Street, which is APN 0284-28305, known as Zone Change 15-101." And you may vote.
So the third one is?
Yeah, the one furthest away.
Yeah, okay. I'll be here 15 years.
It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next is item four. I will call the Housing Authority Board to order so that we can have a joint meeting and City Manager and Finance to budget review.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Instead of going through the big thick package that's in the council agenda, I summarize it in the table format that I will go over with you. Okay, so the first one, the first group of this roll column here is the budget at the beginning of fiscal year, where this is for general fund, where the beginning balance of $10,150,000, with the revenue of $16,422, and the uses of $16,392,000, with the ending fund balance of $10,179,600, and we have a surplus of $29,600,000. $49,600.
That would be very nice.
Okay, so this is when, this is at the beginning of the year, we balance the budget, okay, with $29 million, I mean $29,000.
If you can do that, go for it.
Okay, then when we finished the year end, we did the audit. It turned out that at the end of last fiscal year, we have a surplus of almost $2 million, $1,988,367. Okay, so we really, the expenditures, we increased expenditures because during the year, at the beginning of the year, I asked you to approve a couple of things. And what you approved was additional $10,000 for general government. We purchased the new fire engine and equipment for close to $600,000. Parking control, $800,000, fire prevention overtime, $5,900. All this, and then we also have fixing the traffic signal at Barton and Mountain View, Barton and Campus, and deferred maintenance on the city facility. That's total $85,000. We purchased a handheld GPS system for $7,600. You approved $146,600.
What exactly is that for?
Pardon me?
The handheld GPS system.
Well, it's just handheld, so when you go out in the field, you can push the button and identify the location of manhole, water valves. The old one broke, so we bought a new one.
That's $7,600 bucks?
The whole bunch of them, I think there were two of them, yes.
Wow.
Out of $146,000, we spent $90,000 for Aldean Storm Brain Protection. That's include installing a storm brain system at the end of Almodigno Park and Val Luvin. We installed a series of Gabion Wall up the hill that we did, ended up did the work ourselves, and we saved a lot of money. We trimmed and removed trees, this is the pine trees at Mountain View, Hillcrest, and part Redlands Boulevard, and some additional deferred maintenance to the public city facility. Spent $160,000 for another $37,000. We're going to paint the Manser roof, Manser, I'm sorry, Manser roof for 46. Repaint the civic center, just in the hallway here, and replace the floor at the community room. That's total $1,035,000. So that is right here. Okay, so we still have a fund balance of close to $1 million. This is just, not a fund balance, but it's out of the $2 million that we have surplus last year. We still have that. Now, what happened at the mid-year tonight is we still have the same $12 million. The revenue, we're going to have a revenue go up for about $272,000, and that money came from the reimbursement when the fire department went out and did a mutual aid. We get reimbursed, and you will see that we have offset in expenditures and we also have additional revenue. And we have another expenditure of $480,000, and that spell out in the handout I gave it to you, which is, majority of it is the overtime from the fire department that we get reimbursed back. So at the end, we still have $757,467. This is just between the beginning of the year and the end of this fiscal year. So the fund balance still increase of close to, you know, $757,000. So, we're doing very good. I present this to the Budget Committee last Tuesday night, I mean last Wednesday night, and they approve. Now, I'm sorry this is small, but you have the sheet in front of you. This is the overall of every fund. The one that I want to point out is water fund. And the reason for that is with the state mandate that we have to conserve water, our revenue actually come down a little bit, but we still doing okay. Back in 1995, the city went to borrow or purchase bond to install the reservoir up in the hill. As part of the agreement with the bank is our revenue had to be 125% of our expenditures. Being our revenue reduced, so I have to make sure that I reduce the expenditure. But I'm not planning to increase any, the revenue by increasing water rate because we did that two years ago. Our five-year plan was only to increase by 18%. This is compared to our neighbor city. They're planning to increase 40% within two and a half years. Okay, so I'm not planning to...
So the purpose, the decrease in revenue is related to reduced utilization?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So by doing so, I have to...
Because we put these fancy meters in at the same time, so I wasn't sure how that was going to work out.
Yes, we did spend some money for replacing meter, but at the same time, we generate additional revenue for the old meters that not function as well. But the money that we installed the antenna and the tower on is come from the development impact fee for water because it's new system to improve and upgrade our water billing facility. Okay, so another one that we need to look at is the landscape. We're in deficit, but we know that upfront what we're doing is, because the reason for that is the first 58 landscape assistance district never have any cost escalation. So what you pay 10 years ago is the same as what you pay today, even though the cost of maintain of the landscape increased, but the homeowner still pay the same amount. So what we're doing is we try to reduce water in those areas so we don't pay for water, and we have to subsidize part of it with general fund. Next is the sewer. The sewer is up here. Again, the sewer has already been in deficit, but when we did the sewer rate study a couple of years ago, we did have a rate increase, but it would take a couple of years. It would dip first, it would take a couple of years before it rise. Which is that what happened is the past two years, the deficit actually reduced due to rate increase. But again, I want to keep the rate low. I don't want to just increase it just because and get rid of the debt. I want to make sure that we recover. But at the same time, the sewer rate is also depend on the amount of water people uses. So the revenue come down a little bit, but I think we'll be okay. Yes, sir.
The amount that we spent for the fire engine, did that come out of the general fund or the capital equipment replacement fund?
It's supposed to be out of the replacement fund. It's the same, because we have a line item for capital replacement, but it come from general fund. So you can remove it from that line item, but at the same time, you can put it back. It's in reserve, so.
And at the last...
But it's money we had accounted for to be spent on that, so.
No, 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 I understand that, I just want to make sure.
No, I have the same exact question, so it kind of is a little misleading.
Because technically, if we took out the capital equipment replacement fund, that fund's going to have to be replaced by the tune of $567,000.
Yeah, see, it's, to me, the capital replacement fund is a revolving account. So to the extent you pull it out, you have to put it back in. And we just happened to have a windfall surplus last year, so we just put it in all at once instead of trickling it in over several years.
I'm still trying to understand how we had a surplus of about $1.2 million, is that what you said?
No, $1.9.
$1.9. We spent an additional one from all the stuff that we've added, right? The items you listed, about one, but yet at the end of the year, we still ended up with technically a deficit of $1.2 million. I'm still trying to...
Yes, well, the deficit is because, because we start out with $12 million, and we expand 17. I'm sorry, we spend...
That's correct.
We spend 17. Yes, so we deficit the $1.2. But what I'm trying to say is, is even though it deficit, I'm spending the money that the surplus from beginning of the year.
I see that.
So if you do that, subtract that, you come up with $757.
So, yeah, so you've got two different figures. You've got the beginning balance, the amount of revenue, expenses. Revenue against expenses, it looks like we were short $1.2 million, but yet because of the additional money that we got, the $1.9 million, when it's all said and done, we increased the fund balance by $757,000.
It's attracting all the projects first and then adding in the overage at the end, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and basically it's a function of, the beginning balance is an estimate of how we're going to end the prior year. So, and it was a little bit better than we anticipated due to additional revenues from the Mansfield Oil Contract that came in, and then we had significant savings in expenditures last year. So that gave us the additional fund balance, which increases our, to $12 million instead of the $10 million we were anticipating.
And the other question I had was, we had a lengthy discussion at the last meeting about police and officers. When do you anticipate we're going to have that decision?
Yes.
And how it impacts this budget? Because this would make, look very different if we make any decisions.
No, right now, we're not talking about any additional police.
We are talking about additional. We pretty much made that very clear last time.
Yeah, we are, we are, right.
But in this budget, it doesn't reflect that.
Correct. Right now, right now, we, like, we, this year, we already have additional one deputy.
Okay.
So at the last meeting, we talked about how much the dev one additional deputy would cost. It's between $250,000 and $280,000. So, can we increase the deputy? The answer is yes, because we still have, just within...
Correct.
I'm actually just, I'm actually disappointed because I thought the direction was, last meeting, we were going to put it on the agenda for tonight when Dr. Daley was back so we could vote on this thing and get moving down the road, and I don't see it on the agenda, didn't see it when the agenda was released a couple of days ago. So I'm not certain if that's already in the works or if we're playing some type of game.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not playing, I'm sorry. Because from what, then that is my fault, I'm sorry. Because when we talk, the sheriff was going to have the statistic hopefully by next month, by March. So we're almost there. And the reason I'm comfortable to say we think we can add a deputy is because we have, in addition to additional surplus that we have, we also have potential revenue that will be coming next year. I think it'll be coming next year. I'm going to explain why. For example, Manfield, Manfield is now going to get into compressed natural gas. That if they do so, that means we can have more revenue from the sale tax. We can have proposed extended stay hotel because the owner of the Holland Express are doing so well that they submit the plan for the next hotel that will generate a TOT tax, okay? We have Mazda dealership that's opening up, so hopefully that will be generate more sale tax from the sale of Mazda.
When are they coming over?
They're already here.
Oh, okay.
They're already here.
Temporary signature.
Oh, really?
Yes. And they have approved 30 lots housing tract that was approved on the east side of California. We have two restaurants behind the Shell gas station, the construction that should be opening up soon. And so we have, we have the VA that's supposed to be opening up in August. And then with the hospital, the 16-story building that they proposed, even though we don't do plant check or inspection, the hospital building itself, but we'll have a role in plant check and inspection of the area surrounding the building. So I think we have revenue that'll be coming in. And then in a couple more year, with VA, our PC clinics completed, we can have that five acre piece of property to the east of that that we have a potential proposed hotel, new hotel coming in, and commercial that will be in that five acre piece. So...
And I understand that, I don't, I'm excited that we have increased revenue. Our discussion about police wasn't about determining how much money we have to make a decision about where we're going to go. It was period, we wanted to have a serious discussion, see the cost, and make a decision at the mid-year point. And I thought that's where we're at, so that's why I was hoping to get some clarity on that so we can move forward. I don't want to, I'm not sure that we were going to wait for statistics or more...
Some of us like data.
That's fine, and so I guess then the question is, are we postponing? Because you were waiting for the data.
I'm ready to move on this and we make a vote.
I know, we, I mean, we...
The problem is, we have citizens that are complaining and putting pressure on us as elected officials. There are people that have stood in front of this dais and have asked us and begged us to do this, and this is dragging out for several months now, and it's really getting annoying.
It has not been a representative group. It's been small numbers, and I listen to them and I hear it too. I hear mostly about mailboxes. But I want to see crime data over an extended period of time, so I understand the trends.
If we don't get that in hand, I'm ready to move on it without seeing that.
If we vote based on anecdotal testimonies, we're going to be all over the place.
Well, and, and not to belate our discussion tonight, we had lengthy, almost hour discussion last time, and we talked a lot about not just data, but about police in general and how it does impact moving forward, not, we wouldn't be reactionary, but more of a proactive movement towards what we anticipate the needs are of the city, so...
But based on what?
In the fact that if you see, we...
And that's a rhetorical question, I don't expect you to answer now. I'm just saying that we need to make evidence-based decisions, not just assumptions or fears.
My problem is, we've directed staff multiple times to put that evidence in front of us, period. And that has still not shown up yet, and that's what irritates the heck out of me.
Well...
Period. I'm about ready to go for a review of people's contracts because we brought this up and it's been skated around for multiple meetings now. And if you want data, then we need to direct somebody to put that data together, and it better damn well be here. I hear, I hear through sources that maybe there's pushback when we're not around, and that irritates me even more. So I'm saying from this dais, we want this information, we want it put in front of us, and we want to make a vote on it.
You can't do that tonight, can you do it tonight?
Well, not tonight, because it's not on the agenda.
Obviously not tonight, because it didn't make the agenda again.
But this is, I mean, we need to be sophisticated in how we handle this and not make it based on assumptions or innuendo or anecdotal stories. If the crime rate is climbing and we've got evidence of some trends that project into the future, then obviously we've got to act on that.
Dr. Daley, at the last...
It is the point.
No, 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 but...
No, the point is, we've directed staff multiple times to put that information in front of us. And you get what I'm saying?
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
But they have...
We can vote how we want to vote on it, once it's in front of us. It just hasn't been put in front of us, and we started this discussion too.
But actually, we have got some data. At the last meeting, the police department did show us call rates and have, they have significantly increased. I mean, it's been significant. Not necessarily, we didn't get the data to the actual crimes itself, but as far as for service calls, that has increased significantly in the last six months.
So let's turn to our sheriff's representative. How soon can we have robust data that we can understand and look at to understand the dilemma that we've got? We've all heard complaints, I have as well.
Certainly. I have, we have to rely on the sheriff's department to compile that data and report to the Department of Justice. I'm told it will be presented to us March 2nd. So there is a possibility of getting it presented to you at the next council meeting for March 8. However, I don't want to promise anything because inevitably something, something does happen where that's, that can't happen. But I, that's what I'm told, and I will certainly make sure that we try to adhere to that.
That data is only related to this year, but you already have data for the last three or four years.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and Councilman Duper, don't get me wrong, we have, that's why we have this $757,000 that is available to spend for...
Well, I understand that, and I'm not concerned about that because I also know we put a lot of money into reserves. So a budget is the budget we create. So when we say it's not in the budget, doesn't necessarily mean we can't afford it. It just means that that's the budget we've created for ourselves. So that's misleading, and I don't like that. But, but let's just say for a minute, we haven't, we've had so much direction from up here in the last two months to let's get final on this and make a decision and get that information, and every council meeting that goes by, it seems like we keep putting it off. And to me, that seems like there's something going on behind the scenes that is not...
No, that's why at the last city council meeting, we did present, we did present the numbers and...
And at the last city council meeting, there was direction given to staff to put it on the agenda so when Dr. Daley came back, we could discuss it this evening, and it's not here.
And it sounds, well, I don't want to speak for Jar, but it sounds like he wanted to wait until he got the complete data. I'm not sure that's what you're thinking of.
Yeah, it sounds like the data aren't here yet, so...
No, we just, no, that's not, that wasn't the direction. But I would, and if we want to get into it, I request the minutes be read back. But the direction, we did not discuss data, did not discuss anything else. We talked and hashed a lot of this out, and I realize Dr. Daley was not there. I know that's unfortunate, but we said we were going to, we wanted to bring this back for a vote when he was, when he came back at the next meeting. And then those questions, he could have asked them, and maybe they could have been answered, maybe they couldn't have been. I, I'm not concerned about that, but my point is that I want to make sure the tail's not wagging the dog here in this city, that the council's still in control.
Okay, I heard it loud and clear, and I will put on agenda at the next meeting to add additional deputy, and you can see that we have where the money coming from, so we are fine.
And the chips will fall where they're meant, because...
It was, because if you look at the last meeting, the agendized item wasn't just adding a deputy, but discussion and bringing in the institutions and see what they can do to assist. It was a little bit more involved than that.
Right, but either way, that agenda item does not exist today.
Yeah, we were talking about having a discussion with the institutions in April.
In April, yes.
Because they've got a, they've got a strict financial deadline, the end of March. And if we approach them now, we would get nowhere.
Well, that's fine as far as the university, but we wanted to hear what the VA had to say too.
So we will have it on the next agenda?
Yes, but next agenda will be, will be put on agenda to add additional deputy at how much it costs and then where the money coming from.
Even if the data are not here...
Correct.
We want to have it so that we could possibly have a vote even before the data are in.
And information...
Some of us can say we want data, some of them can say we don't want data, and we can move forward.
Right, but that will, that will be before I have communication with the University or the VA, but that'd be fine.
But I would, I mean, obviously, I'm only one cowboy on this dais, but I would certainly be disappointed if we voted a $280,000 item if we had no documentation to support it.
Agreed.
If there's documentation to support it, I'm on board.
Okay. So, so the, for the item number four tonight is for the council to approve the mid-year budget adjustment.
Yes, please.
Mayor Rixby suggested preparation of a budget to include adding a deputy 40 hours per week. Mayor Temp Duper favored the creation of Public Safety Section in Loma Linda. Councilman Popescu suggested LU, LUMC, and the VA Medical Center partner with the city to offset the cost of law enforcement services. And Councilman Popescu suggested further discussion at the next meeting in relation to the mid-year budget, so that's now. City manager suggested additional funding be included in mid-year budget for the latter half. half of the fiscal year.
That's pretty straightforward.
Well, hopefully we'll have the data next time and we can have the discussion and make a decision.
Would anyone consider making a motion to accept the mid-year budget? Is this a receive and file or is this a vote?
We do require approval, so we need approval for the increased appropriations and then we're just gonna do adjustments to the revenues.
So if we approve the mid-year budget as it stands, any changes could not be made until next?
No, no, you still can.
We can change any time.
See, what you did here, this is what you did. You, you approve all of this. So, so that can happen, sir.
Yeah. So my take on it is, you know, we, we love stockpiling reserves, but when there's a crisis and some of us need data to be convinced there's a crisis, but when there's a crisis, that's a time to spend your reserves.
Yes.
The additional deputy can just be added through approval of an additional appropriation at the next meeting.
Just for clarity, would the item, item should've been perhaps titled, approve mid-year budget adjustment? Or we just make the assumption that we're all gonna, it's gonna be item to be voted on? I guess I'm just, we're, we're still using approving things over at the IDA. Everything that's for us, that's approval, has worked to be considered and approved versus if it's not voted on, then it's just informational. So I guess in just, it just, it appears just from looking at on the, on the agenda that it's just informational, so.
Yeah, and just for the edification of the members of the, of the council, if you're not leaning forward and blowing directly into the microphone, the people at home cannot hear you. Okay, thank you. Especially on the far end, that microphone is not very, not very strong.
You can get some more longer, I mean, mine's fairly long.
While we're on the topic, just a quick question. If we decided to add a deputy, how long does it take? Like from the minute we notify you, we want a new deputy, how long does it take?
Well, we'd have to add that into the contract beginning July 1st. Once that's been approved, it's a matter of waiting in line for the deputy to, to finish the academy and want to come out of the jail. So I can't put an exact timeframe on that, but it does, it does put us in, in place to receive one.
Can we meanwhile get an overtime deputy until the July 1st start date?
We, we are currently filling one deputy with overtime.
How about two?
I cannot do two. I, I'm barely able to do one.
So to Mr. Duper's point, if we're all kinda thinking that we should do this, we probably should act on it sooner rather than later. It's not like you can snap your fingers and it's there tomorrow.
Yes.
So that's the point you're trying to make.
My experience with the organization is that the organization right now is suffering a huge shortage in manpower. And, and there is great concern on how to fix those issues, including massive recruitment drives and other things. The bottom line is, for what we pay and what we do, people just don't wanna do it anymore. And it's getting harder and harder to recruit. So we would have to stand in line behind other, other cities, other departments, other divisions that have requested increases or want things or whatever. And it's not a guarantee that we get it. But the sooner we get on the list, the better. And that's, that's where we stand, if that's what we intend to do.
We always have the option of contracting with another agency for additional help, right?
And there, I mean, those are options. My, my, and sitting on this, in this chair, my loyalty is the city, the citizens of this city. And if we got better service from another agency, then we would go with that. I mean, I would support that. It's, you know, my concern is, is all of us in the protection of our homes and families while they're in this town.
So it sounds like what we need to do, once we make the vote, is aim for a mid-year contract adjustment as opposed to waiting until renewal. So that we can be in front of the class of people who renew in July.
Right. We, it would be a hard press to do anything mid-year. I think it would convolute the administrative process. But if we factor it into the July 1st contract that, that will come up, then I think if we do that now with the anticipation of adding that deputy, we can reserve that spot in line.
So we can reserve it now even though we have, don't, is it, so it's when we ask or is it when we change the contract that we get our place in line?
Well, once, once, once the council has approved it, we can take that to our administration and.
Okay, okay.
Now, I'd also like to be sure that we're all clear on when we say get the data, we have some sense of what we're talking about too. What, what I'm referring to is several different things. One is, I appreciate receiving copies of the weekly sheriff's report. I read each one of them. But I'd like to see, are the number of calls going up? Is it fluctuating? What types of calls are going up versus going down? What are the trends over the last two, maybe three years? But, but I'd, I'd like to see those graphically displayed so that we can, you know, in a line graph where we can easily see the trends, not just tables of numbers. I mean, I can interpret numbers too, but I think graphic illustrations would be easier. And, and in fact, if, if when you get this, if you wanna shoot it to us early, then I'd be hap, I'd look through it carefully and send a response so that if I've got an itch that your data doesn't scratch, then I'd let you know before we ever brought it in here. So I don't, I don't wanna meet again and we have data and you think you've got exactly what we need and you get a grumpy guy like me that's looking for more or different. So I'm, I'm happy to work with you from my perspective so that we're all reading off the same page.
Yeah, and I completely understand. But like I, like I was saying, I, I, I do have data from the previous years, but the data from 2015 is, is kind of a sticking point. But as soon as I have the data, I will work tirelessly through the night to provide that data to you, hopefully the following day.
I'm not trying to ask you for tirelessly through the night.
Are you, are you exempted or can you be our overtime guy?
No, I am exempt.
Okay.
Cannot be.
Welcome to that world.
So, so part of the other discussion and, and if, and if I could maybe give some direction over there to that side, I, I think, you know, we talked about trends and we talked about the changes in law enforcement and the things that you can't just necessarily put on paper and statistics. And a couple of those things we talked about are the fact that if our people have to do a booking at the jail, they have to drive to Rancho Cucamonga. And that is now, that process is now taking longer than used to be 20 minutes, now it could take upwards of two hours. We, we talked about the things that are kinda hard to show on paper that people don't necessarily wanna talk about, but I, I want, I want those things to become public. I wanna talk about them. And those are the things I want people to know, that the job is getting harder. We're requiring more and more and more forms and protocol and issues of these, these guys out there in the field. And so the, the result is, we are getting less proactivity. We are getting less time out there of them doing their jobs. Not by their fault, not by his fault or anybody, but by, by the world, by the system that's, that's just evolving in front of us. And, and a part of our discussion last week is, you see a lot of successful cities look out ahead and instead of reacting to the issues like San Bernardino right now, trying to figure out how they deal with their problems, is a community like this, I think we're smart enough to get ahead of the issue and pre-plan and, and, and make sure we have stuff in place before it ever becomes a bigger problem. But, so those are the things that I'd like to see presented. And I know, I know you guys have all that and that's easy to, to put up there. It's, you know.
And I agree with you completely, councilman. I want a clear picture. That's what I'm after.
Yes.
I don't, I don't necessarily have a bias going into it, but I want a clear picture, just like I think everybody else does. So I completely support what you said.
Just to get some clarity. So from what you're telling us is that if we choose to add an extra deputy, our ability to get one depends on whether you have a suitable candidate coming out of the academy? Does, does the sheriff's department not have folks who perhaps can be reassigned if a particular city needed help? You actually are completely relying on new recruits?
No.
Okay.
What I'm saying is that we, we don't have enough people, we're not hiring enough people to keep up with attrition.
Okay, I follow you. Okay, thank you.
And that's a diff, that's a difficult thing to discuss and I appreciate you saying that because those are the realities of where we're at. And, and it, it's, it's important that everybody knows that upfront. So, you know, but it's also important too, that the organization that makes money off of cities like us understands those priorities. Because sometimes the organization may choose to deploy resources in other areas and maybe they need to hear from local cities that our city may be a little more important and garner that resource more than somewhere else. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not even talking about in competition with other cities. I'm talking about in other projects and things.
Yeah.
How active is our citizen patrol, volunteer citizen patrol? I realize that.
Very active.
It, it is very active.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay. And do they actually call in and say, I see somebody breaking into a mailbox or stealing a box off? I mean, do they?
Well, I can't say that they specifically called that in, but they do report what they see quite often.
Okay, good.
I have a, I have a patient of mine who's on the citizen patrol and he tells me all of his war stories every time I see him. And it's very impressive what they do. They can't actually do anything, but they can sure spot a lot of stuff.
Yeah, well, and that's the point.
Yeah. You know, he talks about driving with his little license plate recognition thing and it bings and he says, I got a stolen car. So he sits there and waits for, you know, he can park right in front of the thing and make sure they don't go anywhere until an officer comes. So.
Maybe each of the councilmen should do some duty on citizen's patrol, except the citizens would be worried it was such a wimpy force that we.
I encourage all my council members and I, councilmen, fellow councilmen, I know most of you have done it, but to go out and do ride-alongs.
Do more, do more.
Well, I agree. Especially if we're all gonna become concealed weapon carriers, then we're almost like deputies.
Okay, so I guess we need a motion.
Move the budget adjustments for the mid-year budget.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, any opposition? I hear unanimity. Now, reports of councilmen. I have a comment that at Sandbag, I have been advocating for our Mountain View exit and talking about possibly, it sounds to me like from talking to Gary Coho, that the Mountain View project is not off the table. The only thing he was concerned about was, when I, when I said we need to redo the Nexus Study, I was mistaking in my own mind, the Nexus Study is about who pays what. And what he's doing is he's talking to the airport authority about, about participating and they're quite willing to do that, especially since their own Amazon project is what's really plugging up that intersection. Whatever. It's some kind of an authority. I don't attend any of the meetings. So, so it looks like there's a brisk discussion about, about how the funding would come together and it would actually reduce our, our share because of their involvement. But more immediately, I enlisted his help in going to Caltrans to re-time that light. Cause I've, it, there's something about Caltrans and Loma Linda lights. They love to set it up so that our traffic backs up in a maximal way. So currently that light, there's a proximal light and a distal light.
Next to the freeway.
As you're heading north to the freeway, the light right in front of the, the gas station, the Shell station, that one turns green and then you can't go because the entire under the, under the freeway section is already jammed. And then the distal light turns green, right when the proximal one turns red. So it disimpacts and then, and then that light, the left turn lane onto the eastbound 10 stays green for about 30 seconds with no traffic flowing because the light is red. It's just the most asinine backwards synchronization that you could do. And, and to me, it's so obvious and he's gonna help us work with Caltrans to make that happen. So he probably has contacted you already.
Yes, I'm forward, I gave up to you.
Yeah, yeah. So that kinda stuff is an easy, quick fix that should help a lot. But anyway, that's what I've been doing at Sandbag.
I, I appreciate that because that, that very intersection, I mean, it has, I've sat where it's backed up south beyond Redlands Boulevard. And it, it's bad. And then you get a, you know, one semi-truck driver that's getting off the freeway and then he gets stuck in the middle of the intersection, everybody's waiting for light so that he can get through. It's, it's bad.
Just a general comment about try to spend more money on Loma Linda. Despite the fact that we do have additional new businesses, it's always good to go back to the old traditional one book. You know, and actually in talking to the manager today, he has actually been impacted in the last two, three years with decreased sales. And that has to do with the fact that other cities are added more sales points for Apple products. You know, I think Target sells a fair amount and I think that's hurting us. And guess who gets all the credit? City of Redlands. You, you have to remember that at one point, the bookstore was selling close to a million dollars worth of Apple products a year. That's significant amount of money that can go into the city of Loma Linda. So I wanna encourage everybody who's paying attention that, hey, spend your money here and if you need a, unfortunately, they don't sell phones. They don't sell iPads and MacBooks.
The same thing goes for gas and other things too, so.
I go out of my way to fill up my gas station.
Go out of your way to make sure you get gas on the side of the freeway and all that other good stuff.
Yeah, and if you, today I made use of another fine service in Loma Linda, West Coast Smog. Best place to get your car smogged. Don't go to another town. They specialize in, they, and this guy, it took three tries to get my minivan passed.
I bet it did.
So.
You drive it like a race car, that's why. I, I had lunch at Tess's, which is a great sandwich place just up the street, and I used my Apple Watch with Apple Pay and they were amazed. And I just have to tell you, it's a seamless process. So our stores are.
You wouldn't be running for reelection, would you? You listed half the businesses.
And another, another shameless plug, my favorite restaurant in Loma Linda for years was Ranu Thai. They're, all the rest of them are excellent too, but this one's like 1% above everybody else. And, you know, I'm trying to be.
Politically correct.
Politically correct, yeah. But they closed a couple of years ago and I was depressed, but they have been, to my shock, open all this time in the old Cool Cactus Building called Chapter Two. Chapter Two of Ranu. Why didn't they say that? But I'm, I'm planning to go there all the time.
But in December, one of, one of the dishes came from there.
Yeah, it's excellent.
Thai bowl is good too.
Yeah, they are. All of them are excellent. Loma Linda has excellent restaurants.
I've been asked a, a question and I'm not sure how to follow up on it and in case there are others that have heard something similar. And that is that we have some kind of disease that's infected a lot of the citrus in this area that came from Florida and that the citrus grows are gonna be disappearing. Have, have you heard anything like that? I know that we've got some citrus in our yard, but the question doesn't originate with me. This is other people that are worried that their citrus trees are not doing well and they've heard that there's some kind of a problem in the district.
Do you know?
Yeah, there's a, it's spread by insect vector and it essentially causes the fruit to not ripen, stay green and the leaves to curl up. And that is, that is an issue. I don't know if they're, I talked to the Ramirez family about that a couple of months ago. And that's one of the reasons that they're shifting from citrus to avocado. There is a big effort on reducing that. That's why you see the traps in the trees, those little stickies. They are working on that, but that is a threat. It's not a foregone conclusion, but it is a threat.
Is there anything that, that we can do to help? Cause there's a lot of citrus in Loma Linda and around here in yards and so for the least. Is there anything we can do to inform people of how to avoid that? How to combat that problem?
I don't know, but I could do some research and get back to your.
There are treatments for these things, but they're, they're labor intensive and it takes, it takes a bit of effort to get a large tree covered.
I, I, I think it, it'd be nice to know a little more about it. I, I, I think it'd be nice to know a little more about it, even the numbers of citrus tree. Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, any other reports of councilmen? Reports of officers? Okay, city council is adjourned. We'll go back to our previously opened housing authority agenda. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public on non-agendized items? Note takers? Consent calendar?
I'll move it.
Any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. Item 3 was taken care of earlier. Any chair member reports? Any reports of officers? And we're adjourned. The last item is our successor agency. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public? Consent calendar? Any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. And we're adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Sounds like we're gonna have a nice discussion of public safety at the first meeting in March.